This meeting is called to order at 7:35. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Peter Yarm, Molarosa.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner here, Charlie Masterburty, Andrew Branowitz.
Here.
Lynn Skoll.
Here.
Jeff Keller.
James.
Bob Bailey-Brislin.
For the benefit of our audience, in the event of a fire or an alarm, two means of egress from this room, out this door, immediate left and immediate right, out into the parking lot, and through that door, immediate right, down the end of the hall, through the double doors, out back into the parking lot. Would you all please raise your pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the benefit of our audience, just so you know how we're going to conduct business tonight, the secretary will read your legal notice. You'll be asked to come and sit before us, state your name and address for the record. You have an opportunity to present your application. The board may or may not ask questions. The audience will be given an opportunity to speak either in favor or against your application. If the audience, excuse me, if the audience does speak, then the applicant will have final opportunity to comment. Additional information not submitted with this application shall be presented while the public hearing is open. Once I close the public hearing, we will not accept any additional information. Comments made by the public that are not relevant to the exercise of the commission's statutory or regulatory authority will not be considered by the commission in reaching its decision. Once the application's been presented, you will most likely vote on it tonight. It's not necessary that you stay for the remainder of the meeting, but you're more than welcome to. You will get written confirmation of our decision from the town. And for the record, a variance can be granted where such grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance, or a strict interpretation of the ordinance will result in a hardship. A hardship exists where the zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land differently from other properties, where use of the property or reasonable use of the land will be impossible without the variance. Self-imposed or financial hardships cannot by law be considered as a reason for granting a variance. Madam Secretary, first, leave your notice, please.
The Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold public hearings on Monday, May 20, 2013, at 7:30 PM in the Enfield Room of the Town Hall, Lower Level, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut concerning the following. ZBA 2013-05-01, Site Enhancement Services, Applicant Enfield Lodging LLC, owner 20 Phoenix Avenue, MAP 45, Lot 12, BR Zone, requesting a variance for additional 138.55 square feet for signs on elevations without public street frontage on the south elevation and on the west elevation, and a variance to have two tenants on the same freestanding sign. EZO Section Table 10.30.5, footnote number two, and 10.30.2B, small i, and 10.30.5, number 12.
Thank you. Please go forward. And for the record, Lynn will be as a regular member tonight.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Mike Rivera, Site Enhancement Services, 6001 Nims Parkway, South Bend, Indiana, 46628. I'm here this evening representing Longhorn Steakhouse at the location of the corner of Hazard Avenue and Phoenix Avenue. As you mentioned, we're here requesting a sign variance for additional square footage to have the ability to have signage on elevations that do not have direct public street frontage and the ability to have two cabinets on the same freestanding sign on our parcel. As was mentioned in the legal notice that was read, originally we were requesting a variance for 138.55 square feet of extra signage, signs on the south elevation and the west elevation of our building, as well as the two cabinets on the freestanding sign on by the street. However, once we had a chance to get familiar with the area, drive the corridor, take a second look at our site, conversations we've had with the planning staff, we have taken a second look at our proposed sign package and have actually reduced the sign package from what you may have in front of you. So I've got some revised artwork. If it pleases the board, I can pass this out and walk through with you. So as I was mentioning, our site is zone BR. BR, located at the intersection of Hazard Avenue and Phoenix Avenue. By code, our site is allowed to have two square foot worth of signage for the front elevation of the Hampton Inn and for the Longhorn Steakhouse. Our property, we share that parcel with Hampton Inn, so by code, the site is allowed to have 597 square feet worth of signage, as was stated in the staff comments. However, based on the square foot calculations, Longhorn Steakhouse is only allowed 180 square feet worth of signage. Along with that comes one freestanding sign not to exceed 50 square feet with a 20-foot maximum height. As I mentioned, the initial request that you had in front of you was for four wall signs. They were all 36-inch letter sets, one logo on the front of the building, and one shared pylon. Each letter set, the square footage is 68.9 square feet, the logo is 19.7, the cabinet on the freestanding sign was 23.25. So in total, we were asking for 318 square feet worth of signage. I mentioned to you that we have revised our sign package to better fit this corridor due to situation out there, west of the property, there's quite a bit of trees. So the modified sign package, which is shown in this artwork, would be for three letter sets, one on the north elevation, one on the east elevation, and one on the south elevation, the same size of 68.9 square feet, the same 19.7 square foot logo, and we've reduced the size of the cabinet that we'd like to put onto the existing freestanding sign. Taking a look at page two of the artwork I handed out to you, that shows the site location. As I mentioned, we're less than a quarter of a mile east of I-91, intersection of Hazard Avenue and Phoenix Avenue. It also shows the sign sizes and locations. Sign sizes and dimensions are listed at the top left-hand corner. The locations are shown by the red arrow or bubbles on the aerial, as well as this shows the setback for our building. Our property is setback about 136 feet from Hazard Avenue, so we've got quite a bit of distance between the front of our building and the street, as well as our property, as I mentioned, shares the same parcel with the Hampton Inn. If you look at the next page, this shows the traffic patterns for anyone traveling this corridor, and I spent quite a bit of time this afternoon traveling up and down the corridor, and it's a very busy commercial corridor. Obviously, with any site, you can access from the north, from the south, the east, and the west. What makes our property unique, not only because we share the parcel with Hampton Inn, because we're set so far back from the street, this site only has one actual entrance to the property, and it's actually off of Phoenix Avenue on the southeast side of the property. So no matter which direction you're going, you need to know to get onto Phoenix Avenue to actually get to our property, again, which provides a justification for why we propose the sign package that we have. The next three pages show elevation shots, what the building will look like, what the signage as proposed. Front elevation, as I mentioned, is the 36-inch letter set with the 19.7 square foot logo. This is the prototypical signage that you'd see on any new Longhorn Steakhouse restaurant, and that would be the north elevation facing Hazard Avenue. Next elevation is the east elevation, the left side. Again, it's the 36-inch letter set, this would face Phoenix Avenue, and that, as well as the prototypical sign package for that elevation. Final wall sign is the 36-inch letter set on the south elevation of our building. As I mentioned earlier, this elevation does not directly face a public street, so one of the sign variances that we were asking for was the ability to have this sign on this elevation because it doesn't face the public street. Page seven of this artwork shows our proposal for the freestanding sign. Currently, Hampton Inn has a 41-square-foot sign at 10 feet tall. What we're proposing to do is modify the existing freestanding sign, maintain the existing cabinet that Hampton Inn has, just raise the sign up to the code allow of 20 feet in height, while adding our 14-square-foot box to that sign. I mentioned earlier that code allows 50 square feet for a freestanding sign. However, the design that we've submitted here, based on communications we've had with the planning staff, is determined to be two freestanding signs. The square footage of the Hampton Inn sign is 41 square feet, taking the rectangular on the sign. However, if you were to take only the surface area of this sign, it actually comes down to about 25 square feet in area. Adding in our 14 square feet puts us at 39.29 square feet of surface area for this sign, which is about 10 square feet less than we're technically allowed to have for one sign. Originally, when the sign package was submitted, we were told if these were to be one panel with both logos on it, that'd be allowed. However, due to the unique shape and size, dimensions of the Hampton Inn sign, it's not really possible for us to create one sign keeping the same trademark and recognition of their brand that you're accustomed to seeing. The following three pages in the package, this shows justification for why we feel the sign package that we've got is warranted. The picture on page eight is taken east of I-91 on Hazard Avenue. This would be the point at which you can first see our building. From where this picture is taken to where you need to get into the right-hand lane to make a turn onto Phoenix Avenue is about 130 feet. So without the freestanding sign out there at the street to at least allow somebody traveling along Hazard Avenue where the speed limit's 45 miles an hour, to know that, okay, there's a restaurant coming up here, once you hit this point, it's almost too late to make a safe traffic maneuver to get into the proper lane and get down that street. What we're looking to avoid is having somebody make a quick lane change, cut somebody off, you know, maybe slam on the brakes, or worse yet, you know, make an illegal turn down that street or kind of cross the intersection, make a U-turn, and come back. The next page shows a picture of the site taken from Hazard Avenue as well. This is on the other side of the street, across the intersection of Phoenix Avenue and Hazard Avenue. And again, it shows the two wall signs that you can see, as well as our freestanding sign. This is taken directly in front of the Red Robin, if you guys are familiar with the area. Again, just identifying the property to allow people the notification to be able to make a safe traffic maneuver to get onto Phoenix Avenue where they can access our site. The final page is a picture taken just south of our location, actually about 200, 300 feet south of the entrance to our property. So as you can see, the rear wall sign on this building is going to be the only notification any motorists have that will be traveling north along Phoenix Avenue, that the Longhorn Steakhouse is there. This gives them the notification they need to safely identify our property as well as make a maneuver into the property. Restaurants are more often than not are impulse locations, so this being such a heavy commercial corridor, without giving somebody the advanced notification that they need to get to our site, you know, it opens the door to, like I said earlier, unsafe maneuvers for somebody to get to our property, or worse yet, just not even having the opportunity to get there. If the board has any questions, I'm more than willing to address those.
Have you talked with Hampton Inn at all about the freestanding sign?
We have, and we've got approval from Hampton Inn for all the sign changes. Actually, what Hampton Inn has signed off on was the initial submittal that we've made, and they've also signed off on the reduced version of the sign package, so the removal of the west wall sign and the reduced freestanding cabinet.
Have you looked into with the sign company and with Hampton Inn about making one sign, even if they kept their logo, and you just had a connecting piece between the two of your signs?
I don't have anything determining if we can create a panel. By doing that, it would increase the square footage of the sign. So what we came to this board with was the reduced version of that, calculating both separately to get the square footage as low as possible because we're only allowed the 50 square feet. Like I said, Hampton Inn has 41 square feet now, so adding on to their cabinet and adding the Longhorn Steakhouse cabinet to that, we'd be looking at quite a bit more square footage than we're even allowed to have.
What's the affiliation between Hampton Inn and Longhorn?
There is no affiliation between the two. It's just the development, there's a developer that owns the property, and that's where Longhorn got into it. So I don't think there's a direct affiliation between Longhorn and Hampton Inn. It's just that was the best spot they found in the corridor.
What was the initial plan for that sign?
That I don't know.
I believe it was a hotel with a restaurant, but no restaurant was named. It was a pad that the planning and zoning department, I believe, would take applications to decide what restaurant best fit the area.
I believe the council had the final say that night.
So, and I mentioned earlier that, and it was also in the staff comments, that our site is allowed 597 square feet worth of signage, with Hampton Inn being allowed 417 of that square footage. The proposed sign package that Hampton Inn has up there now is only about 260 square feet, so they're not utilizing all their square footage as well. So even if the sign package just in front of you this evening was approved as presented, it would still not totally allow the square footage that were allowed for the entire site.
Question pushback.
Nothing else can be built up there, can it? Is it?
It was set up originally as a hotel and a restaurant. To my knowledge, it's never been changed. Took years to get a restaurant that the council thought was appropriate for the site. Right. So it should be finished.
I saw on the approvals for the signage for Hampton Inn, they were allowed Hampton Inn to have streets. However, there's no suites on any of their signage. Right. It's just Hampton Inn.
Because they're not suites.
So is that part of the reduction?
No, sir. The numbers I gave you for the Hampton Inn sign-
No, when you were just talking about, they didn't utilize all of the signage.
No, the numbers that I gave you, the 417 for Hampton Inn is the two-to-one based on their building front, which is 28 and a half feet, so two-to-one for that. The 198, or I'm sorry, the 258 I gave you for their signage was directly from the document here that outlined what their signage was, and as you mentioned, it has the total square footage here, so.
It's actually, their total square footage is less than that because-
Yeah, because, yeah, they don't-
They didn't utilize any suites on there.
You should have the breakdown of what they did.
Right, but what Peter's saying is their sign doesn't say "in suites."
Yeah.
That was, they chose not to include that.
Correct.
So that square footage is actually less.
No, this is the exact square footage that they utilized. They might not have put in "in suites," but this is what they used. This is what they questioned, and this is what they got proof for, and this is what they used.
The only concern I have, Peter, is that I don't want them coming back in for more signage or a mistake that we made like we have in the past, thinking we know everything we need to know, and then we get surprised.
And we did look at putting an individual freestanding sign out there for Longhorn Steakhouse, but just given the uniqueness of the property, we didn't want to throw a 10, 15, or 20-foot tall freestanding sign for Longhorn out there. That would have required approval from this board, but that would have just created more confusion because it would have either blocked the existing Hampton Inn sign from one direction or it would have blocked ours from the other direction. So that's ultimately why we were coming to this board requesting the modification of the existing sign that's out there, is to eliminate any confusion that there may be, with there being two signs out there.
I'm not aware of any place in town where they have two businesses, individual signage on one freestanding foot. And that's the problem on that. I actually am aware of a few and didn't take pictures. I can't give you the name offhand, but there's a couple up and right here under five, just north of Dunkin' Donuts. And it's not one sign. It's two separate signs.
I'm sorry, I can't visualize where you're talking.
There is one, and it's legal nonconforming on Hazard Avenue. It's been up for at least 30 to 40 years.
Who are we talking about?
But that's the chiropractor and a couple of other things on one pole on Hazard Avenue, but that's the only one that I'm aware of.
We're not talking about where country donuts is.
No, yeah.
Oh, you know what I mean.
Yeah, no, it's where the gym is. You know, that condo complex, the business condo?
In the back.
Yes. They have several businesses, and they have separate signs on one pole. That's because it's been there forever, and I think that if there are any other signs up there, they've been there. But I'm not aware of any other ones in town except for that one that are allowed.
Yeah, they have the same pole.
Yes.
With two separate signs on it.
Correct.
I just, I got to tell you, Peter, I'm in the same boat you are. Because I don't want to end up having everybody in their brother's law showing up saying, oh, let's add some signs.
Particularly along that corridor where you have so many businesses on pads outside of, say, like the Enfield Commons, you have Red Robin sitting on a separate pad. You could conceivably have any one of those businesses coming in with Red Robin and saying, well, you will allow Hampton Inn and Longhorn to do it across the street.
And there are, out of all those restaurants, only one of them with a freestanding sign, and that's 99. And their sign is so small, you can't read it if you're driving by anyway. So I'm not really sure why they even pulled one out of it, but-
That was in the original approval when the old shopping complex was approved.
That's where Stop &amp; Shop is.
Right.
Yes.
They have it their own separate.
But they have their own sign, and that's where his problem is, because if he wants his own sign, that's one thing that could take advantage of, but he's absolutely right. They're going to be like this.
Yeah.
They're going to be towers.
It would either be-
Can't do this.
It would be 100 feet to the west of where their sign's at, which would block it to anybody coming east or to move it east along our property. It would actually setback even further from the street because of the right turn lane to get onto Phoenix Avenue.
Right, which would put you in the same situation as the 99 sign that really no one can really see.
But they see the building.
But they see the building, and therein lies my biggest concern, is that with the signage on the building being distinctive, you know, particularly your steer head, if that's what you call it. I know, having experienced other Longhorn Steakhouses in other parts of Connecticut and the country, that is so distinctive, that a lot of times, that in and of itself says, it's a Longhorn Steakhouse.
Well, go to Mass. You've been to Longhorn up in Mass.
Yeah.
Unless you know that's in that mall-
You don't know.
And you know where to drive to it.
Right.
You'll drive around.
Right, you do the same thing in Manchester.
And that's what I was trying to illustrate with the photo on page eight, is that by the time you do see the prototypical signage that's synonymous with the Longhorn Steakhouse, it's almost too late to make a safe maneuver to get back to our entrance, which is why, even though it may be, it's only a 14-square-foot panel out there by the street, it does give a motorist traveling along that corridor some advanced notification that, okay, there is a Longhorn Steakhouse up here.
When you say traveling along that corridor, are you talking all of Route 190, or are you talking the off ramp, just to the west of?
Either coming off 91, or even if they're already on Hazard Avenue, traveling east towards where Hampton Inn is at. There is the control device right there at the exit ramp from I-91, right where Hazard Avenue meets it, and from that, from that control device, you can't see, you don't see any of the building. You won't see the actual building until you get to this point here, and if you happen to have been in the left-hand lane, as I mentioned, you only have 130 feet before you need to be able to get over to the right-hand lane to get down into our property. So it could be-
The problem is, and you're not from here, right?
No.
That is very difficult, to come off 91 and make a swerve. You could be in the right lane, I've watched, this happens all the time, they could be in the left lane, and they could go straight, and they could turn left, or they could pull back over. It has nothing to do with you. It just has to do with congestion of that space. To go from one light on and hit another light. And what was interesting is you made me look for the Hampton Inn sign in the bushes. I almost felt that it was, they should get rid of it because you can't see it.
Yeah, there is a lot of landscaping around it, and that's, the proposed changes to the sign would raise the height of their sign up, as well as get our sign up above the existing landscaping that's out there.
With the building signage, though, is just as even keeled as every other restaurant on that street. I mean, if you're not from the area, you won't know Red Robin's there, and you've just about gone by it.
Right.
And that is the same with every other restaurant.
You don't know Moses yet.
So the one thing we have to look for, that we're charged with looking for, is what is unique about this property. Every restaurant on Hazard Avenue, that corridor, is the same. It all poses the same problem. That's the downfall.
If you want to go down that road.
Well, let's save for discussion. On page two, you show signage for A and B. Yes, sir. Where A is, just on, actually, kind of like where E is, there's two large pine trees. What's happening with those trees?
All landscaping is remaining. So the two pine trees you're speaking of are, they border the existing freestanding sign. Are those the two you're speaking of?
Yes.
Yeah, they're showing, I don't have the total. Yeah, the plan is for those to stay there, just modify the existing foundation and steel for the freestanding sign, raising the Hampton Inn sign to 20 feet total out of height, and then our cabinet would be-
How are you going to be able to see signs A and B then?
If you look at page eight, the distance between the freestanding sign and the building is at, it's, I mean, our building is setback, it is set 130 feet from the street. There's quite a parking area between the two. I don't foresee there to be any issues viewing the freestings or the wall signs from either direction. As you can tell from the picture on the next page after that, it shows, this is from the opposite side of Hazard Avenue and Phoenix, you can see the wall signs and the freestanding sign. There's quite a distance between the building and where that freestanding sign's at, that the freestanding sign would not block either of the wall signers.
Okay, on page eight, what sign am I looking at?
Page eight, that is sign A, and sign B, the freestanding sign, is sign E, if you refer back to page two.
Yes, sir.
That's the front of our building.
Oh, I'm never back.
Yeah, the logo's on the right, on the chimney, and then the long horn is right above the front door. So between, page eight is looking from-
I have this-
From the west to the east, the next page is from the east to the west, and then the last page is looking north from Phoenix Avenue towards our site.
I have this confused with the first set of drawing. I made first set of pictures.
Yeah, we originally were- Yeah, we originally were proposing a sign on the west elevation, which has since been removed due to all the trees that...
I was going to ask you about that one, but you...
As I mentioned, we took a second look at the corridor and just realized that that sign had no visibility, and also, we just removed it right from the package.
Will the Longhorn sign on the tall be lit?
The freestanding sign? Yes, it'll be internally illuminated.
White, red, black? What are you doing? I think it's white.
It will be, it's white illumination. It'll be a panel with vinyl on it, so the one thing that'll illuminate will be Longhorn Steakhouse.
The long words.
So not the whole thing illuminated.
Gotcha. Have you gone in front of planning zoning yet?
The building changes, that's handled by the architect. I'm here specifically for the signage, and the signage need to go in front of planning zoning as well.
If it's part of the pitch, if it's part of... Did they get approval already for planning and zoning?
That I don't know.
I believe they did. Didn't the restaurant get approval for planning and zoning already?
I know, only they got approval from the council. I don't remember them going in front of the planning zoning yet.
Well, I believe all they had to do was go before them for the liquor, because originally, when Hampton Inn came in, it was approved for, the overall development came in at one time, and it was approved for a hotel and a restaurant. The hotel was chosen, Hampton Inn was chosen, and the restaurant sat there, the pad sat there for a while. And then negotiations started with a few, but it ended up with Longhorn Steakhouse getting approved. But they had already been approved, so all they had to come before planning and zoning for was the liquor.
So they don't have to be in front of them with an ad built or floor plan for buildings or anything?
That I can bring to you off the top of my head.
I thought there was something.
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, if they then go in front of planning and zoning, planning and zoning can approve signage?
Correct.
So again, we sit here with, do we give a variance in front of planning and zoning, or...
Would you like me to go upstairs and get the book, see if they've been approved?
I think it's important for us to figure out. I think it's important for us to know.
Okay, can we take five minutes recess?
Do you need a recess? Do you need a vote? No, I'll just call for recess. Nobody needs to be subject to...
Something. I'm going to have to sheet. We're all the guys having a conversation. I remember reading, we're not on anymore, are we?
I'll go and play laws. Okay, go back from recess. Any further questions of the applicant?
Do all of your Longhorn restaurants have the same building signage?
Yes, the sign package, as shown here, is the prototype of sign package. The only time you will run into locations that don't have some version of this sign package would be if the ordinance didn't allow for it, and the variance was not granted for it. Typically, that would involve the two signs on one elevation being, one being the letter set, one being the logo. But other than that, if code allows it and/or a variance is approved for it, yes, this sign package would be the prototype of sign package.
But not all of your restaurants have a freestanding sign?
I can't say for certain that every location does, but the majority of them, yes.
Go back to page two. A is your entrance.
Right. Yes, sir.
If there was some type of compromise, could A be the channel letters, B the logo, C the logo, and D the channel letters?
Okay. That is what those signs are.
Well, C is...
C is the channel letters on the right, on the east. D is the channel letters on the south.
Right.
E is the freestanding sign. So A, B, C, and D are the four wall signs.
Right. And I'm saying if A and D are the letters, and B and C are the logos, that'll reduce your square footage.
To, I guess I'm confused, reduce the square footage to...
Your overall square footage.
Okay.
It'll be down to like a hundred and ninety-four square feet, and you only need a hundred and eighty.
You need a hundred and eighty, and that includes the freestanding sign?
Yes.
So, I guess, so the question is if the square footage comes down, is there an issue with the freestanding sign?
Well, that's, again, something's compromised on it.
Okay. I mean, honestly, the freestanding sign, we feel, is very important for the site. We can compromise on the size of the wall signs if the board feels that that compromise will, I guess, shed a better light on the freestanding sign.
I guess maybe the issue I'm having is, you're asking for a lot.
Yeah, the specific variance, and I'm sorry, I didn't actually give you the amounts. The legal notice was for a hundred and thirty-eight point five-five extra square feet. The revised sign package is for sixty point four square feet, because we removed the one wall sign. If we can get the square footage down more than that, with the wall signs, the three wall signs, the one logo and the shared pylon, is that's up to the board to favor the time?
That's up to discussion. However, my point is, nowhere along the corridor, or in any other business, do we have signage on three sides of the building. And if you're driving east on 190, and you're looking for, you're unfamiliar with the town, and you're looking for businesses, there's only one sign for each business within that corridor, with the two shopping signs there. And that's what everybody looks for, okay? For you to come in and ask us for four signs is not within our regulations.
Okay. And the request for the south wall sign, as is shown in the very last page of the drawing, that is the only notification anybody traveling north on Phoenix Avenue will have to get into our property before the actual entrance to our property. That's the other thing that makes this property unique, is that we share it with Hampton Inn, but we only, we have the same entrance, so if that sign is not on the south elevation of our building, you won't know it's a Hampton, a Longhorn Steakhouse, until you're essentially up to the stoplight at Hazard.
But I can tell you, people that are going to be traveling north on that road, earlier traveled south on that road. That's that. I mean, I can understand you wanting to have people from eastbound and westbound Hazard Avenue seeing you. But I'm not sure that sign's going to prove you anything. Like I said, people that are coming north on that road, earlier that day at one point or another, they went south on that road.
That's more of a town.
I mean, that's a...
That's more of a town.
That's a town thing.
That's more of a town, inner-town road.
I mean, there's a few businesses down there, but people that went to work through our building.
I understand that, but, I mean, I understand what you're saying. And it makes sense, but I can't say for certain that somebody may not end up back there inadvertently without noticing the restaurant, and then coming back up, you know, so, but, I mean, yeah, like I said, I understand.
Peter, are you thinking that if we made the sign a little smaller on the north side? Because the thing is, people with Hampton Hampton Inn, that actually is a sign they'll see.
But the Hampton Inn's got to give them something, telling them the Longhorn's there.
Right.
I mean, I've stated enough...
You're not connected. You can't assume what other businesses are going to do for other businesses. They're also going to run...
I mean, if we can get the square footage closer to the total amount, number of one eighty, is that something the board's receptive to?
Like I said before, it would be up to discussion.
But the problem is, we still have the freestanding sign.
Right.
Because that's not limited, that would be our regulation.
I'm having a little difficulty with the south bound, with the south side sign.
Okay.
And I'm looking at the photo that says traffic view, next to the last photo. It's not numbered.
The last page is back to the yesterday.
Second to last.
Nine.
Oh, no, okay, last.
So it's page ten.
Right.
So that's coming up.
I think...
So that dateline shows the entrance to our property.
Got it. But I think depth perception from a photo is a lot different than in actuality.
Okay.
And it almost seems to me, if I'm heading north on Phoenix Avenue, I'm going to see the east sign in order to take that left-hand turn.
You won't be able to interpret what the east sign says. That photo is there, that overlay, that is one hundred percent to scale, so that would be what the finished product would look like when the building is out. And as I said, without that rear wall sign, the sign on the east wall, you might be able to see it, you won't be able to interpret what the message says and identify that with the Longhorn Steakhouse.
Any other questions of the applicant? I think it'll be very quiet tonight. Some are a little quiet.
Yeah, outside a little bit. I guess the question too on that D sign that we've been discussing, there's no way to bring that down in size, like could that be the logo instead of the letters?
I mean, we can scale down the letter sets to get square footage down if the board would like us to. And as I mentioned, we can make that compromise if the board is willing to, I guess, to shed a favorable light on the freestanding sign, because as mentioned, we feel the freestanding sign is very important for that location. If we scale down the letter sets proportionally, we can get this square footage down for the three letter sets, the one logo, and the freestanding sign panel that you see in this artwork, down to one ninety-three and a half, which would be a variance request of thirteen and a half square feet. So the variance request for that would be thirteen and a half square feet, the south wall sign, because it doesn't face the street, and then the two panels on the freestanding sign.
But you're not willing to take a stab at saying that if you put your logo on that south-facing side, as opposed to the words? That alone...
The logo, while it might identify to some people as that being a Longhorn Steakhouse, the majority of the population don't associate Longhorn Steakhouse simply by the logo. It's only in conjunction with the letter set Longhorn Steakhouse that connection is made for most people. Whereas Red Lobster, for example, their new brand is, they use a similar feature, which is a lobster logo. Now, that alone, while it might be a Red Lobster, that doesn't necessarily identify that being a Red Lobster until you see it with the letter set. So where you're saying to put the steer head itself on the back, that wouldn't give the notification that the letter set would give, unless it was accompanied by the letter set sign.
Peter, if the discussion is to try to consider the freestanding sign, and so we don't open up a discussion with others who may want a freestanding sign, I think what we're going is that we're controlling the amount of square footage, which would then make it more difficult for others who already have extensive square footage to try to get a freestanding sign.
That's where my mind was going.
And that's, right, and I, and he's correct on that. They're not going to know the steer ears horns versus the words.
Right, not in this neighborhood, yeah.
They got to have the words.
And with the reduced letter set size, as I mentioned, the one ninety-three and a half square feet, the additional fourteen square feet would be the square footage that would be for that tenant panel. I do have a one-page handout that would help the board with the reduced letter set size.
Okay.
The board would like to see that. So as you can see, it's the same sign package that was originally presented to you, just scaled down the letter set.
Jimmy, can you introduce these into the record?
Yes, yes.
So what's the magic number we're trying to call up with this?
It's down on the night.
We are allowed one eighty for our site. And the site itself is allowed five eighty-seven, and based on the approval for Hampton Inn, there's a hundred and seventy square foot left over for the site.
Not for me.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the room to speak in favor of this application? Anyone to speak against it? I'm not going to close this public hearing at this point. I want to see where our motions go. So, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded by, no discussion.
Okay, I'll take it. With the hundred and ninety-three point five-seven, where they've come down with the letter set size, I lean in favor of them having the freestanding sign with it staying encompassed in the tower itself. My concern is opening a possibility to freestanding signs down that corridor. But keeping him very tight to square footage, I think they've come to compromise, and I do believe that slingshot that you come off that exit ramp, they kind of need that sign.
I tend to agree with you. I think my biggest concern was the freestanding sign. I think when you first come in and you don't know the community, as I did many years ago, you don't really know where all the roads go, and that when you go down Phoenix, you have to come back up it, because there's no way to get anywhere else if you don't. So I understand the south-facing sign, but I do know that with the reduction in foot size, there's a willingness to compromise here. But I don't want to hear from Red Robin and the McDonald's down the road, and the Moe's, and everybody else. The one that comes immediately to mind is the Olive Garden and the building that sits next to it that has the previous Hazard Grill. Because that is probably the best example of what we could come, could come before us when a new concern comes into that building. So that's my biggest concern.
My concern is the freestanding sign. It will now be the only rest...
It will now be the only restaurant that separates itself like that. All the other restaurants deal with just the building signage, except for ninety-nine, like I said, there's a very small. With the reduced square footage, if you took that away, they don't even need the variance. They're at one seventy-five. So then my question is, do we really need to give a variance?
How do you get the one seventy-five?
Well, because he's got the one ninety-three minus, and, and the magic number's one eighty.
Right.
So he's got one ninety-three minus the fourteen square feet.
But doesn't he still need the variance for the south side where there's no street frontage?
No, he's got those front, front, left, rear.
But isn't that a separate variance?
Why, why is it a separate variance? He's got all building signs and the front sign as one.
Is it one, okay, I misread it.
So that's all included in his one ninety-three fifty-seven.
And the square footage remaining is one seventeen.
I just asked and I was told a hundred and eighty.
What are you, okay. Yeah, but remember, we started this thing off saying that they didn't use all their space.
Correct, and this is what's remaining?
Hundred and seventeen oh nine.
Right.
That's for the entire property or just for Hampton Inn?
Right, 'cause I'm, where'd you get one eighty?
Right.
Where'd I get what?
One eighty.
Where'd the one eighty come from?
Where do I have one eighty?
That's on pretty much everything.
That's, you sure it's not?
So that would leave one hundred and eighty for Longhorn, five ninety-seven minus four seventeen.
Right.
It's on B two.
So that was the magic number I was looking at.
Right, I'm, the magic number I'm looking at is one eighty.
I'm confused, I apologize.
Don't worry, we're with you.
So if you take that and you minus the fourteen square feet for the tenant panel on the freestanding sign, he's within his ring, his allowed signage and no need for a variance. So can you give me a reason why I should give a variance? You know, there has to be a hardship on the property. And with this signage, he's already above the signage all the other restaurants have. So, so again, we look at the playing field. You know, right now you put everybody equal. If you add the freestanding sign, does that move him up here?
And will our.
So do we grant a variance to move somebody forward above everybody else?
Right.
And then you do run into the, okay, other people coming in, well, you did it, give it to me.
Right, right.
Right.
And the Hampton Inn sign is already in the bushes.
Right.
Did you all notice that when we went around?
Yes, yes.
So my concern is.
Yeah, you had to really look for it, didn't you?
My concern is taking away the tenant panel, he has shown that he can come in.
Under his.
Into compliance, thank you.
Right.
Couldn't find the word.
I'm with you.
That's.
So, you know, if somebody has a way of convincing me that we need to grant a variance for the tenant, I'm open to listen, but right now I don't have it.
Can I, can I speak again or no?
You're gonna get another shot.
Okay.
Hang on.
I have no comment. I'm, okay, I'm just, I'm waiting for somebody to try to convince me, but, I mean, I like the way the sign looks, but is it necessary? And, you know, that's why I ask the questions. Do all of your Longhorns have the same letters on them? Yes. Do they all have freestanding signs? Maybe not all of them do.
I can think of a few in the area that don't.
So we're not being unreasonable, I don't think. And it's already more signage than, than other buildings are given. He just happens to fall into regulation with that amount of signage.
And we have two, it's two variances in front of us anyway. So it's not like we have to rewrite the legal notice or something. Okay.
So that's where I'm at.
Just, um, in the application itself, on page B nine. Yep, the response to item number three, middle of the paragraph, says, "This site could operate without the proposed variance but would be a substantial disadvantage to other businesses, restaurants in particular within this commercial corridor."
Right.
Without the variance, taking Moe's course of thought here, they still have more signage than any other restaurant in town.
And like I said, you, you don't see Red Robin till you just about buy it. You don't see ninety-nine till you just about buy it.
But then go to number six, Peter.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, public hearing is closed.
Wait. You wanted to, you wanna add something?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Sorry.
I just wanted to, like, address what, what you mentioned about the, the square footage. Yes, the drop-down sign package removing the, the tenant panel would get us to the magic number of one eighty. But the south sign does still require a variance because it does not have direct street frontage. It doesn't face the street, so we do need to still need a variance for that sign. So, I mean, you asked, if, if we remove that sign from the package, do we still need a variance? Yes, we do, is, I guess, the ultimate answer because we don't face the street. The other issue that was brought up was setting precedents in, in the town. The, the variance, and, and that's what was addressed, and you guys were briefly discussing the, the application, a variance request is taken on its own merit. So you mentioned Red Robin for one, but they're a lot closer to the street than, than the, than Longhorn Steakhouse is gonna be. So where you mentioned you don't see them till you're able to pass it, once you pass it, you can still get into that shopping center safely and navigate back to the Red Robin. With Longhorn, once you pass Phoenix Avenue, that's your one shot to get into our property because our entrance is not from, from Hazard Avenue, it's from, from the side street. So you need to be able to, either you're gonna turn into the shopping center just east of us, go through their shopping center, cut through, but again, you'd have to be familiar with the area to know to do that. Or you're gonna, you know, cut into the shopping center with Red Robin, circle back around, then come back on Phoenix Avenue and enter the property. So unless you're totally familiar with the area, you're not gonna be able to make those traffic decisions. What we're afraid is gonna happen is somebody's gonna make, like I said earlier, a brash decision and, and make an unsafe maneuver to maybe try to make a ninety-degree turn right away at, at Phoenix Avenue, or, or worse yet, make a U-turn once they cross the street. So, so that's what we're looking to avoid. And I guess if there's any other questions, I can address those too.
I know what I wanna ask, but forgive me, it may not come out in a one complete sentence. When a voter is unfamiliar with the area, exits this particular exit heading east off of ninety-one, they are not inundated with many different signs saying, here's Longhorn, here's Red Robin, here's ninety-nine down the street, there's McDonald's, et cetera, et cetera. If you place your sign where it is, doesn't that provide you with an unfair advantage towards all those others who don't have any? It's not like when you're out in the Midwest and all the signs are a hundred feet in the air and you can see all of them. So in essence, by not allowing the sign, isn't that placing you at the same playing field as everyone else? For those un, as you were saying, non-resident, unknown to most.
And I mean, it, it may give us an advantage by having notification out there, but the property is allowed a freestanding sign out there. It's allowed a fifty-square-foot freestanding sign. If, if we could make the, the numbers work and have one panel, which, the, the sign directly across the street, which has the AT&T, the Haircut Place, and the Chipotle, that's one panel with three signs. So I mean, so when you say, and, and you mentioned another restaurant that has a freestanding sign, albeit a small one, they have one. So our property is allowed a freestanding sign. It, it's just the, the fact that we share it with another business limits us to what we can do because it's my understanding that we couldn't even have a freestanding sign on the secondary street because the lot itself is allowed one freestanding sign. So that's what puts us at a disadvantage is the fact, one, that we're set so far back so you don't see our wall signage until it's too late, whereas the other locations, while there may be trees and, and they're on the level playing field, they're still closer to the street and, you know, you've got a little bit more time to, to identify them. If you miss them, you can still safely get in there. The fact that we're so far set back, we share the property with, with another business, and our, our main entrance isn't from the main street, those are the three things that, that kind of limit our property. And as I mentioned, the, the variance request is taken on, each variance request is taken on its own merit. So, you know, it's not like we'll be setting precedents if, if another business comes in two blocks down the street and says, well, Longhorn Steakhouse got it, we should get it.
We can table this application, give the applicant an opportunity to go back, commit with a revised application for a freestanding sign, talk to Hampton Inn, see if you can incorporate it into one panel. Okay. Then come back with the correct square footage for the building signage.
So, so we're looking at getting down to the one eighty square footage in the one, one panel design?
Yes. If you would like us to table, if it's possible to do that.
We won't know until we talk to Hampton Inn.
Right, that's what I'm saying, right.
Yeah. So I guess the other option is hoping for the best tonight. I guess let's table it to next month. If everyone's okay with that.
So, a motion on the floor to approve the variance to allow an additional hundred thirty-eight point three five of signage, variance for a sign on the south side elevation without public street frontage, variance for a sign on the west elevation without public street frontage, and variance to add two tenants on the safe freestanding sign. And we have a second. I'll remove my second. Okay, removed.
Do you want me to remove the, uh, motion altogether?
Make a motion if you would like to.
Yes.
Second, I'll make a motion to table this application till next month.
Second.
Are those in favor?
Aye. Jenny, would you like us to hold on to our packets?
Yes, please. Thank you for mentioning.
Oh, and Mary Ann, if you are correct, in the handouts that were provided us tonight by Jenny, if you look at the email stream that she has here at the very top, it says, "I will let the ZBA know that the meeting you looked at both applications and have no concerns on the traffic safety."
That was the tra, I know, I read it.
So yes, you were correct.
Ugh, you know, you read all this stuff when.
I know.
I'll favor on the deposition. Jenny?
Yes.
For this application that we just tabled, if you could contact a public safety officer?
Uh, he's already in.
No.
No, I understand. I'd like his opinion on the safety issue if that's, if the freestanding sign is not there.
So you wanna know if the freestanding sign is not there or is that an issue?
Does he find it, does he find it an issue?
Mary Ann?
Yes. Hang on one second. Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, May twenty, twenty thirteen, seven thirty P.M. in the Enfield Run Town Hall, lower level, eight twenty Enfield Street concerning the following. ZBA twenty thirteen dash oh five dash oh two Yankee Castings, applicant owner, two forty-three Shaker Road, map ninety-five, lot six, I two zone, requesting a variance of thirty-six plus or minus feet for a front yard setback four feet, plus or minus requested forty feet required. EZR section six point one oh dated this ninth day of May twenty thirteen, Mary Ann Turner, Secretary, Journal Inquirer, May ninth and fourteen, twenty thirteen.
Evening.
Good evening. How you doing?
Name and address, please.
Uh, Yankee Castings. My name is Kevin Ecarelli. Address is two forty-three Shaker Road. Uh, Brian Ecarelli, Yankee Castings, also a resident, which is also Kennedy Drive and then tilton.
Okay.
Well, right now we're actually looking at adding on to our facility and looking for a variance to actually go closer to our private right-of-way. Currently, right now, the way we're set up in the actual, um, shape of our lot, kind of prohibits building addition anywhere else, we currently are asking for about a forty, where we're looking at about a five thousand square foot addition to the front of our building to actually increase our overall office space along with putting a nice facelift on the front of our building. The only access to our road or to our shop is actually down that private right-of-way, which we share with, uh, one other person, which is Camerata. And sort of tilt on, I guess, to, they still, uh, own the road and they still have a plant down there, but they're actually not using it anymore. So what we're trying to do is come closer to the allowed setback from our existing property. I guess our hardships are the actual unique shape of our lot, our access to our road with our customers coming down. We have a lot of usable space in the back for manufacturing, but there's no really ease of access to that from our actual, uh, private right-of-way for our customers coming down CS.
We, we have in the back of the building, like it says, uh, we're looking at future plan, plan for a major addition for manufacturing. What we have to maintain in between our existing and any future building is a fire lane. So that doesn't allow us to add on to the back of our existing. And what we're trying to do is with this addition, we will house all of our engineering and management offices all in the same area. If we can't do this, then it's all piecemeal. It would be like you splitting your town hall up and having one at five Main Street and the other part at thirty-five. It's just, it's not cohesive. So what we're looking at is trying to just centralize everything to the front portion. It is an addition. We would utilize our existing offices for production and new offices to the front.
How many square feet was this?
It's approximately forty-seven hundred. We're not, we haven't done exactly planning on it yet. I have a couple of preliminary drawings of what we'd like to do, but it's plus or minus one hundred, that is my assumption right now.
Have all of that with the office?
Yes. It is connected to the front of our building, which is where we house all of our offices right now. We're actually extending out the entranceway, putting a nice lobby in along with a new conference room along with some, uh, offices and some, uh, open floor spaces as well, we're seeing people there. And it's connected to our existing offices where we all house ourselves right now.
I'm just curious about the swale or whatever that's called in the front.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do some engineering on that. That's actually, uh, an original drainage that they put in. We're probably gonna end up doing something as far as putting a drainage pipe down the center of it and then paving over that or grading over it or something. So we still don't lose any water runoff or actually the water has a path still. But we also still need some parking up in the front too. Uh, the way our neighbor has it across the street, Camerata's on their building, it's more or less gonna look like that where you come down our private right-of-way. less going to look like that where you come down our private right of way, we're going to have enough for parking space and maybe a little bit of grass area and then the entrance into our building.
Those, those are mainly used for just stormwater or runoff drainage.
Right.
When we, when we did the street, those typically ran the entire length. What we did was when we paved the street, we put in surface drains on the side of the road. We would just do the same thing in front of our building to allow for runoff.
That whole big hole would go away.
Yes.
Because I was confused on how much depth was because I tried to measure it yesterday when I was out there between where the, where, I thank you for putting the paint down.
Yes, yes. I was out there in the rain with the paint.
So it makes it easier for us to understand what you're trying to do.
Yep.
So where the, what's the white wall was, the main to that space and then where that drainage was, I was concerned how...
That will have to be covered, correct.
How you're going to add that. Do you think then from the right of way, you're going to come and park like in front of where the new wall would be, like this?
Yes, corinned up perpendicular to our actual front of our building.
Front of the building.
And be pulling straight in, correct.
Do you remember the exact dimensions from the building to the edge, what we're talking, the edge of the road?
Well, I measured it and I got about 30 feet.
Right, and that's what I got about, too. I think I got about 32 depending on where you said the edge of our road was.
That's what I did. I went to one end and I was at 29, I went to the other, I got to about 30.
Correct.
I figured I was on camera.
You, you are from Camerata.
Yes, yes.
I was going to say, you are from the public property.
Yes, yes, yeah.
That's a necessity.
That's over there, the radiators and everything installed from that.
If you're looking at the drawing of the sentence.
Yeah.
The proposed addition to the right of it shows a slash line for 40 foot sentence.
Correct.
And your scale is one inch equals 40 feet.
Correct.
If I scaled out, I show 17 and a half feet.
Correct. The way the, the actual drawing is here, the actual edge of the road actually goes, according to this map, it goes straight down through onto our property, which I'm not quite sure why. It actually says that whole drainage ditch that we were just talking about is actually part of the road. And I don't know why.
Correct.
Who did your, who?
This, this was...
Was this surveyed?
Correct. This was actually surveyed back in 2007, I believe, or 2009, don't quote me on that, from, uh, I should say, or somewhere. Uh, we use them if they're on hazard app with the...
Was it Marshford?
Correct, yeah. Right, when in reality, like I said, if, obviously the road doesn't go through that drainage ditch, it actually is on this side of the drainage ditch.
But if this, if this drawing is showing your 40-foot setback, front yard setback, from that road edge to your proposed addition is 17 and a half feet. And you're looking for four feet. That's what you're proposing.
Well, that's actually because the tape measure shows about a four foot. It's closer to like nine right now, really, depending on where you say the edge of your road really is where the pavement stops. But according to this, yes, it looks like the private right of way comes straight down through our drainage ditch in front of us, but it's actually not a paved road there.
But if...
So from the survey line, yes, it looks like it's going to be about 17 feet. On the other side, if you actually take a tape measure, it's about 30 or 32 feet give or take from the edge of the road.
But we can't, we can't guess at this. We need, we need to be accurate. Because if we grant you the variance for 36 feet, that means you can go when the actual road is surveyed and it shows that it's on the other side of the storm drain.
Yeah.
You can go into that storm drain. If this is an actual survey that Palatier builders went off of...
Yeah, I guess I'm really going to have to check to see if that actual dotted line is actually surveyed or not. The 40-foot front setback, because I'm assuming that that is surveyed, which in reality, then this scale drawing that we just said, we're actually asking for 17 feet on the actual edge of the road rather than just the 32 that you can physically measure to the edge of the road.
Right.
Right.
But I, I have a couple of questions and concerns. First of all, your property line doesn't go to, and everybody's calling it a road, I'm going to call it what it is, it's a driveway.
Right.
I mean, that's all it is. It is a plot of land that is owned by Tilcon that has to remain open for the businesses in back to travel through. It's not a road.
Correct.
Okay? But your property doesn't go right up to it anyway. I, I've, I've looked on the GIS, I've looked here at the maps of the town hall, your property doesn't come to the edge of the, of the driveway anyway. So my concern is if it's a driveway...
It's not, no.
What are we 35 feet from? If I have a right of way in my backyard, I can go within five feet of it.
Excuse me.
No.
It's nine o'clock, do you need to extend?
Motion to extend. So move.
Second.
Second. Are those in favor?
Aye.
So that's, am I correct, Jenny, if I have a right of way in my backyard, I have to grant access to any, to whoever needs that right of way, but I can build up to it?
Yes.
All this is, is a right of way. It is not a street.
Correct.
It has never been intended for a road. It's, it's a totally separate plot of land from what Tilcon owns on the other side anyway. They, Tilcon literally owns it. It's a piece of industrial property, which is, I mean, Tilcon bought it in 2001, it's 1.66 acres of industrial land. It's I-2 land. It's not a road. You need to be 35 feet from a road. They are, well...
Okay, okay. Hang on a second.
Um?
Subdivision rules.
Okay.
Okay, it's called a street.
Yes.
With a right of way on it, so don't try to miss.
Does it have to have a 40-foot setback on a private right of way?
And, and all it's talking in here, right. So don't call it a driveway. Let's, okay, so he's trying to play semantics here, let's make sure we get, don't get caught in our underwear. It is a street and he's got a right of way on a street. Okay? Jenny, where does it talk?
If you go into your packet, you should have a copy of the new street. Yes. And it was gone over with Jose and everyone else, and that's why they're here.
Right.
Because they didn't have enough to proceed.
And it had a lot to do with the fact that over the years, you know, you've built on this way and that and you've kind of...
Were a series of additions since 61.
So they took a lot of that into consideration when Jose wrote, and I, I spoke to Jose briefly this afternoon.
I think literally all they need though, according to this, is four.
Well, it depends on where you take your measurement from. As we discussed earlier, I mean, if you go from the actual edge of the driveway of the paved right of way, then yeah, we're only looking at give or take, we'll say 10 feet really, because I'm going to have to go out and actually double check the corners, because I checked one corner, I got about eight others, one rejected the other day, I got about nine.
Because ultimately, you're asking to put the addition at a four-foot front setback.
Right, that's what's in...
That's what it says in the DRT.
The map.
You submitted this drawing, and this is the drawing we're going off of.
Correct.
And what I'm saying is, based on the drawing, the 40-foot setback, you really only need a variance of 22 and a half feet, which gives you a front yard setback of 17.5.
Correct.
Or 17 and a half feet.
Correct. And that's where we're going on to, because that is the only surveyed plot, lot, or site plan we have to go to.
So where are we getting this four feet from?
If you actually take a measurement, it's actually like, yeah, from the actual edge of the road.
That edge of the road, like he says, that when they put that in, that put a variance, so he's going from the 40-foot setback where we're looking for a variance.
And that's what we're getting. The variance is only going to be, how many feet are we looking for beyond that 40-foot? 17?
17 and a half.
Yeah.
Even when you just eyeball it, it's got to be more than four feet.
Yes, I agree with you there. That probably four foot to the backside of the ditch and then some.
Right, yeah.
Okay?
Right, and that's what I was fooling around with.
Yeah.
We certainly need to have the answers.
So I guess before we do anything. My question is, if we go by this drawing right here, and we're looking at, right now it calls out a 40-foot setback, we're asking for a 17?
17 and a half.
Correct.
17 foot, six inch.
Okay, right. And that's from the survey line, that's why I assume that is correct. That line is surveyed and added, and we'll check that. It had to be when we put the 06 addition, the 09 addition on, there's no question about that. I don't know, we were before, every time to do that, it's got to be correct. They would have found it before this, I hope. So I'm just looking, like I say, when we put in the detention bond and visually where they put the dam.
Yeah, like I said, I'm 99% sure of that. 40-foot setback line is correct in this survey. They were asking for 17.
Okay.
And it's definitely what our application calls out for?
No.
Well, it calls out, I think, on the tape measure.
Four feet.
Yeah, I don't want the tape measure.
Four feet plus or minus. Not even added. So I have a couple of different options. We can table it, you can get the correct information, make sure that you have a proper safety, um, survey. Or we can go off of this, off of this drawing that shows the 40-foot setback. Revise the numbers. If that's approved, then you're stuck with it. So in reality, if you really need four feet, you want to, you need the 36 feet and we're only going to give you 22 feet, you got a problem.
Yeah, I'm fine with actually using the numbers off of this tonight and actually changing it.
To 17?
Correct, to 17 and a half. The other ones were based on tape measure and I'd much rather do that.
So we're looking at a 17-foot, right, instead of 4 foot, 17 and a half. That's what I'd like to have before the board tonight, then, so we can move on, just put it down there.
So we've increased the variance from four feet to 17 feet?
What I can do is...
But if it's wrong, we give them a bigger variance than...
Based on your draw, that's how it works.
They want it.
They would have to come back. So it's always based on what they provide you.
So, let me make, before we...
In the 209 addition.
Yeah.
In the, when I look at the plan, I can see that you have the truck and a bay here.
Correct.
But when I was standing out there, this really seemed like it was over here by the 206 addition.
There's actually three bays right there, they just show one on there.
If you, you look at the 06 addition, you can, you can actually see the two loading docks still there.
Right here, right.
They're, they're kind of phantom lines a little bit.
Right, right there.
Yes, that's correct. We're eliminating...
The first...
Correct, correct, that's correct. We have a trailer backed up to it right now, we're offloading.
Right.
Yes, that will be eliminated.
Okay. Because when I was standing there looking at it, I'm looking at, you kind of threw me off a little bit.
You tried, didn't you?
You just thought, Steve was paying attention.
Yeah.
I got you.
I'm still trying to read all this worded and it's, sometimes I, when I...
I kept expecting the cops to come, to be honest. I was sitting in the parking lot for so long and driving around, then I'm getting out and measuring stuff, and I get back in and I'm making some notes, I said, any minute, someone's going to have the cops here.
Well, I know the cameraman's going to see who comes down there, and I think he actually gets like a text message on his phone when anybody comes over after hours.
We put a system that will replace at night there because of the loss they were having there, so.
We're all there and you could, you'll fight...
Hopefully nothing was missing, then.
Unless you guys are all suspect, I don't know.
The only thing missing was me almost walking in the ditch and staying there. I didn't do that.
That is unfair.
So going forward, and for the record, the revision to the text will read a variance of 22.5 feet for front yard setback, 17.5 feet requested, 40 feet required.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other questions on the board?
My only question comes from a relative news to this process. Why not go up a second story as opposed to coming straight up?
It didn't lend itself to the, having everybody in the same area. Now again, taking your offices and you've got some people down in the first, some people down in the second, you're talking the staircase to get back up and down, you're talking ADA compliance, how we're going to run that through.
There's a four-point column going through the existing offices, so disturbing our manufacturing office space.
Now, by pulling it back, it...
Don't get into my office.
Yeah, by pulling that back and going two stories, now because of the snow load, we had to change our existing building, all superstructure, older design, so we have to upgrade all that, and it just, it was literally undoable crosswise. It just wasn't feasible. The biggest thing was management wise.
You could have stopped at ADA.
Okay, sorry, sorry, yes, you're familiar with, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in favor of this application?
Good evening, my name is Peter Bryanton, I'm the community development director and now the acting director of development services. I've been working with the applicants for the last few months to try to get them prepared to go up to ART and now in front of you folks. They didn't get into about what they do, but what they do is pretty important to the town. They manufacture airplane parts and, and those parts are distributed all over the country and actually all over the world internationally. It's, it's important because it's one of the few manufacturing companies that we have left in Enfield and, you know, we, we need to retain those, those types of businesses here. I know that this doesn't, you know, work into your decision on, on providing a variance, but I thought it was important that we know what they do and why it's important for the town and why it's important that they stay here. So I just wanted to say those few words and good luck with your decision and, you know, hopefully this will work out for them. Thank you.
Anyone wants to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Our hearing is closed. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. I'm not sure that, I mean, I don't see a problem with the addition to the building. Again, I know everybody's calling it a street and I'm just calling it what I see it as, but...
It's a terminus. It's a terminus.
Right.
Passageway.
Exactly, and I don't, I mean, it's, the construction of the building's down there already, they're not going to be not conforming to what's already there. I just don't see that it's going to pose a problem allowing them to build. Although I am trying to find somewhere I had read something about, not to do with this one, but the next proposed building project, somewhere about, here it is right here, impervious coverage. So that may be an issue with the next building project, but I don't see an issue with, with this project. Mary Ann?
No, I agree with you.
Nope, I agree with you.
I don't see an issue.
I have no comments either. All those in favor of approving this application, please signify by raising your hand. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Maker of the motion, reason.
It conforms to the area as on a right of way. And there's no issue with that cutting post. Let's see if I get the right words in here. Bringing it into compliance to match the print plan given to us makes more sense. So we don't have an error.
I'm not going to call it a road or a driveway. I'm going to call
It's a right of way.
Because I've struggled with the term road.
It's a right of way. We didn't tell you, but you don't have to stay through the rest of our meeting. Oh, okay. Did you get a room at the Hampton Inn?
Reason being, conforms to the area given the private entrance to the development. Revision to the text based upon the drawings submitted by the applicant. Okay, moving along. In your package, you have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 25th, 2013, as our motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Second by Mary Ann. Discussion. All those in favor? Any abstentions? Motion passes 4-0-1. Correspondents?
Jenny? Oh, just a few very quick things. I'd like to introduce you all to Brenda White. She's our new recording secretary starting tonight.
Hi Brenda.
Hello, glad to meet you.
That's, um, the bylaws, as you know, were changed. I'm just waiting to pass the new ones out until planning and zoning does their portion of it. And that's coming June 6th. I'll send it to Capitol Region. So as soon as it goes through planning and zoning and that there aren't any changes, the grant is back to you all. I'll give you all a, a new bylaws copy. And lastly, I didn't have a chance to pass it out. You'll get it in your next packet. But the permit denial sheet that I update you on for all the meetings, I sent out on 26 Cooper Street, the tall shed. And I've been waiting because I'm trying to correlate it with the people that inspect or they're doing violations as well. So I'd like to have both of you go at the same time. And that's all I have. Any questions? Anybody need anything?
No, I'd just like to mention that Mr. Breslin contacted Ginny with some information from, from HUD in regards to the Fair Housing Act. And you'll see within your packet, there's some literature on it. However, since this was his piece of correspondence, we'll wait until he's available.
All right, will everybody hold on to that then?
Yeah, and we'll let him briefly summarize what it's about. Other business? Or should do a job?
No.
Mary Ann?
Um, during our last meeting, we talked about the Thompsonville Fire Department and their open variances. At this point, I believe those variances are still not posted. Filed, thank you. And I went in and I spoke to Jose briefly about them and told him that in our discussions, we felt that the variances that we have to be, that they would have to file would now be incorrect. And we could actually have a planning and zoning telling them one thing because they changed that, that setback requirement that we gave them a variance on in ours. And if they file this one, it'll contradict this one. And at some point, they're going to have to file ours because there are things in it like the 55-foot setback and the 30 feet in the front, which is off by a half an inch. They're going to have to file something. And if they, and I said to Jose, what are you going to do? And I haven't heard from him.
They are filed. They were filed a day or two after it was brought up last meeting.
Which ones were filed?
Using the Board of Appeals and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Then that puts their four parking space in violation, which means that they could be sided with a cease and desist.
You might want to check with Jose. He feels that it's not an issue.
We asked Jose to, to respond back to us and we're sitting here.
Can you remind him, we would like an explanation as to why they're not contradicting each other?
Because we understand that planning and zoning can override setbacks. But the, but the specific question had to do with the fact that we had already done a variance. And so we
Well, and if the variance was conditional, Mary Ann, that was the issue.
Hey, that's right.
It was conditional, conditioned upon the parking space being there. So now without, with the spaces coming in, the condition's not met, is the question.
Maybe point out there were conditions. But I will mention your waiting.
So what you, Andrew, what would our course back, what would we do?
Well, the, the variance isn't valid if the condition's not met.
And then that means?
They don't have that variance.
They don't have the setback variance? They don't have the side variance?
No, they were separate. It would only be as to the piece that was conditioned.
But it was all one variance. It was a single motion.
Right, but the only piece that's invalidated is the part that was conditioned. There's a part in there that's conditioned upon the parking spaces. So only the conditioned part would be invalidated.
I just think we would like things to be tidy. So we don't have 20 years from now.
It would be, it would be better if they came before us and we removed the condition.
That's exactly what I had said to Jose, to have them just come back. So I'm confused on why they would file it after the question was asked. It would just solve a lot of potential problems.
So if you can get Jose to respond either directly or through you.
In writing.
Based upon that response, if necessary, I will send a letter out to Maria.
I will, I will send him an email and copy you tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other business? Motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn, 9/23.